Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld.
Here.
Ms. Kivachi.
Here.
Mr. Golson.
Here.
Ms. Carrie Nikas.
Here.
Dr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg.
Here.
Isabel de Costa.
Here.
Great, thank you. Would everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome everyone to our April 28th work session. And first we list out our prior meetings. On April 7th, we had a regular public board meeting. April 21st, we had both Health, Wellness and Safety and our React Committee meeting. And then 4.2 we list out our upcoming meetings. On May 5th, we have a regular public board meeting, May 12th, a Finance Committee meeting, May 27th, a work session, and June 2nd, a regular public board meeting. And then we have one presentation this evening, Wissahickin High School Monthly Highlights.
So, one very exciting thing, we have Mini-Thon, which was this Saturday. And the neat thing is that we're privileged to have it every single year. I know that other schools don't have it every single year, but and they raise a lot of money, but this year we broke our record by $30,000. Which, yeah, like on paper, it's like, wow. But then they realize by how much we had, we hit $81,176 with 49 cents. So, that's insane. And then for this high school robotics team, we went to Worlds, myself included, and it was an awesome experience. I was able to help out a Chinese team on our alliance. So alliances are randomized, you don't really get to pick who you want to team with until you're in the final round. And it was like a really interesting experience because we had a Mexican team. We were all trying to figure out why this robot wasn't moving. And then we figured out after the match. That it was a short, my coach was like, okay, you shouldn't like still go help them out even though like we're not going to play with them anymore. So after that match, I went up to them, I spent like a good hour or so trying to figure out, and I was like, oh wait, it's a short. Because the aluminium was touching one of the wires. And after that, they were able to compete in their matches and actually like showed their cool robot. Like they worked so hard out throughout the year just for them to have a short at the world competition. And then we ended, I believe, probably semifinalists in the, in our own division, so there are eight divisions. So we were in like the Archimedes Division. And unfortunately, we did get eliminated because our robot partner got stuck on what we call the barge, which is imagine like two pillars and like a net on top where you put like these huge dodgeballs which are called algae. And we all got a yellow card somehow because the rules say that if one robot on your lines suspends itself on any part of the field, the whole team gets a yellow card. So unfortunate way to get out, but we were still able to show our division how cool we are. And we actually did win the Excellence in Engineering despite that, which is really nice. We typically always win it, but to win it at the world level is very different from winning it, say like at a regional level. So that was really neat. And for sports, another school record was broken in the javelin, girls javelin, with Brooklyn Compass throwing 118 feet with four inches. So, no idea how she does it, but that's really insane, that's cool. She's also sixth all time for discus and seventh for shot put, so stellar athlete, phenomenal. On like on paper, that's like huge, but then you see, when you see her throw, it's like so majestic, you see like that javelin going far, oh my god, it's so cool. And then for girls lacrosse, they've also been doing really well. They've had so far as the time of I checked the newsletter, 11 wins and zero losses. I know they had a game today, but I did have to leave for track practice. And for HLA, we have the speaker series, so kids can come in during these meetings and learn about, you know, what career options there are, say like you don't, you don't know what to do, like these adults immigrated from countries and like they showed, they showed their successful stories. So I know one of them is, I believe, a vicious entrepreneur, which I was like really cool. So yeah, and we're going to continue with that and hopefully continuing that with the next year, so yeah.
Thank you Isabel. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Isabel, I'm curious, where was the world competition at?
Houston, Texas.
Cool. Did you enjoy Houston?
I did, it was really hot and then only for me to come back to semi-hot weather here. Yeah, it was really, really nice.
You need barbecue?
What's up?
Barbecue?
I did not know.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you again Isabel. All right, now we have our first public comment period. I don't have anyone registered in person, anyone online, there are no hands raised online. All right, then we will move on to the Board President Report. And the first item I have is approval of a service agreement with Educational Leadership Consulting for Professional Development for the Board, not to exceed 1,500. And this is the training that we'll be doing with Nancy and Amy come June at our board retreat. And we'll be voting on that. Tonight's review. All right, any comments or questions about that?
There's actually no contract attached. Or at least I don't, I don't see it.
Do we have a contract? Just, okay, so yeah, just a note. Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to Superintendent Report, Jim.
Thank you, just one item to review, it's the much awaited revision to the 24-25 school calendar. As everybody knows, we have so far to date, just one emergency weather closing day, and we're going to assume that's it. Which means that next meeting on Monday, or yes, it's coming Monday, we'll, we'll vote to revise the calendar officially, have the last day of school become June 11th, which is one day earlier than it currently is.
Any comments or questions about that?
How will we push this out to everyone? Because I know that this, I mean, I feel like it's a little, it's getting like a little later. It's only like going to be a month back by the time we pass it. So as parents are planning for like childcare and vacation, I just want to make sure, can we get it out this week? Or do you have to wait till we vote officially?
We'll, we'll get it out the minute we vote officially. We have a roster of people who've called our office, and it's about 150 now, Jones, I'm not sure. But people are very interested in this. We told them this is the likely outcome, but we can't be official until it actually is important action.
Well, I know, but we're not going to vote no on what we have to do anyway. We can't just like be like, oh, we're not going to skip that extra day, we're going to, I mean, we're voting yes on it. Okay.
You're glorious.
And it doesn't affect any school events, like last year, I think it did affect Field Day at one of the schools.
If it might, I think there was a middle school event, because now the three half day or those missile days are all the same week. Monday, Tuesday, the last week, last year went to Friday, Monday, Tuesday was a little bit of a anomaly. But if it does, we'll get word out soon.
Yeah. One other question for you. I know there was some sort of change at the state level, that it's now like not days, but hours. How does that affect our schedule with moving into like next year, the following year, we got to make changes like that?
Yes, the, the state used to require a minimum number of days and also a minimum number of hours. And if for some reason you didn't hit it, then you would get penalized. Now, the state allows for a minimum number of days or hours. So for our purposes, our calendar is still 182, but that could, moving forward, change in some fashion if so desired. But it does, it's not reflected in this one or in next year, which is already been. Yeah, we need, and if it were to be changed, so the 25-26 school calendar this coming year has already been set. And if we wanted to change something after that, the government policy would reflect what the guidelines are.
Thank you Jim. All right, Assistant Superintendent Report.
Good evening, I don't have any informational items and no action items. Thank you.
Thank you. Up Board Solicitor Report, Michelle.
Well, it's just for review as a, for our vote for next week, is a settlement agreement between the family and the district, the terms of which are laid out here, and of course we adopted.
Thank you Michelle, any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, thank you, we'll move on to our Board Secretary Report, Tim.
There were four meeting minutes for approval, marked 31st minutes from both the Communications Committee and the Work Session, April 1st Finance Committee meeting, and April 7th Regular Board meeting.
Great, thank you Tim, any comments or questions? All right, Board Treasurer Report.
For this month, we have the approval of the March Treasures Report.
Great, thank you, any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on, thank you again, Human Resources, Danielle.
Hi, good evening everyone. For your reviews tonight are eight items under Section 13 of the Human Resources Report. The first two action items include resignations, retirements, appointments, changes of status, leaves of absence, extracurricular changes and volunteers. Item 13.3 is for the approval of our continued agreement with Penn Behavioral Health for our Employee Assistance Program, also known as EAP for our staff members. It provides mental health services at no charge, a confidential service free to our employees and their families should they need to take advantage of that. 13.4 is for the approval of job descriptions. 13.5 is the approval of the annual salaries for staff in our confidential group for the 25-26 fiscal year. This includes four of our staff members from here at CEO. 13.6 is the amendment to Mr. Timothy Booker's contract approving his annual salary for the 25-26 fiscal year per the original contract agreement. 13.7 is amendment to our contract with GHR, General Healthcare Resources. They're a partner in staffing, classroom assistants and subs. And finally, 13.8 is a new agreement for custodial sub-staffing services with SOS, also known as School Operations Services Group. This will, will help to fill in some vacations and some vacancies for our custodial sub-staffing. Much needed and they will be very appreciative. So that is all I have tonight, thank you so much, and that concludes my report.
Great, thank you Danielle, any comments or questions?
Hey, thank you Danielle. In the GHR contract, I'm not familiar with all of the acronyms. Would you happen to know what an RBT, BCBA, COTA and SLP are? There's a lot of acronyms.
Sure, yeah, you wouldn't, yes. I'm really good at acronyms. RBT is the Registered Behavior Technician. COTA is the Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant. BCBA is Behavioral Board Certified Behavior Analyst. Board Certified Behavioral Analyst. What was it?
Speech Language Pathologist. And if there's a CF acronym? Nothing matters, I'm just, I didn't even realize we had these wonderful acronyms.
Well, now you've given me a challenge, I don't know what the CF following SLP stands for, but we can certainly get back to you. That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you for the question. That's a lot of healthcare professionals.
Thanks for the question.
Okay, that was impressive, Dr. Wong, thank you. I just wanted to come out also, so I was disappointed when I had heard Mrs. Brown was retiring from the middle school. She puts on the most amazing performances every year. But I was really happy when I heard that Miss Carson from Stony Creek is taking her role at the middle school because she does amazing performances at Stony Creek, I mean, all of our music departments do. But I was just happy to hear that we would have somebody to continue in that role, that is great. So, good choice. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, then we'll move on, thank you Danielle. All right, Communications Committee, Zappy.
No, no updates for this week, thank you.
All right, thank you, Curriculum and Technology, Danielle.
There are several things, and I'm going to let Dr. Dewan take it because she's going to more eloquently explain it than me.
It would be my pleasure, thank you. We have no informational items this evening, but we do have seven items for review for which we'll seek approval on May 5th. Item number one is to seek approval to purchase Chromebooks for kindergarten, first grade and second grade. As an update, we did have a pilot for kindergarten and first grade to explore the idea of tablets in the classroom. The outcome of that pilot was to move forward with Chromebooks for the students instead of moving to the pilot approach, excuse me, the tablet approach. But I also want to point out that the purchase for kindergarten and first grade in this action review item is going to restore a shared device model. As we know, part of the budget process last year included moving away from the one-to-one device at the K1 level. And Mr. Falcon was able to get a, a cost that would allow him to purchase in the shared device model, but at a two-to-one ratio, which would be very beneficial for our K1 teachers in thinking about their approach to using the devices in the classroom, but also will not be the one-to-one, which we understand was the intent and the plan. The purchase for grade two as a part of this item is maintaining the district's standard one-to-one ratio at grade two. Grade two was not a part of the conversation for shifting away from one-to-one, and so they'll maintain one-to-one. Item number two is approval, and this is an annual approval, of the appointment of the school physician and school dentist. Item number three is for approval of one student's outplacement services as indicated in the chart. Item number four is the approval for us to seek permission to request an Act 80 exception for our high school seniors' calendar. For this school year, the seniors will fall short of the 180 instructional days that we have as a part of our plan for this year as indicated in policy. And we can talk about that as Dr. Curtis Field mentioned. And so because of the school closing on February 6th, the seniors will have 179 instructional days. And so we'll seek exception from PVE. Item number five is for approval of the revised planned courses and instructional resources following the curriculum review process, when we had these items on, for the 30-day review, as you may recall, in the last board cycle. And now though, you'll see the costs are listed in the chart. And I want to point out that amounts that are indicated with an asterisk reflect not only the purchase of textbooks, but also includes the costs for six years of digital licensing and student consumables, which we call the workbooks that students use in those programs. And so those amounts won't all be expended in the 25-26 school year, it's be spread over the next six years. But this allows us to see what the total cost will be for implementing the new curriculum, following the curriculum review cycle. That six-year timeframe aligns with the curriculum review cycle. So just to explain why six years. It also helps us to lock in today's pricing for those physical and digital components of the new math resources. So that is a vote. Item number six is for approval of the curriculum and instructional expenditures for next year, specifically for the assessment and software renewal. And item number seven is for approval to accept donations from the Wissahickin Education Opportunities Foundation, WEAF. And so this list is inclusive of a donation to our high school science department, which includes the $20,000 Lockheed Martin brand, as well as a couple of educational grants, including a request from Stony Creek for adaptive physical education equipment. The request from the high school for a mural to be painted, that's going to be a, that's a request from the Art and Library Department. And then from the high school marching band, you may recall at our last board meeting, the WEAF student, student board reps were here and they talked about one of the grants where they would be donating funds toward the purchase of a new marching band trailer. So that include, that's included in this list of donations that we'll be seeking the board to approve to accept. Any questions?
Right. Thanks for the overview, Dr. Dewan. Just a couple of things on 15.7. So one, is that correct? Like the very first thing is $14 and equipment value.
Okay, I was like, is that a typo? Thank you for the question, that is correct. And it's because the donation of the equipment that we received was valued at $19,986. And so what was remaining is $14, so the actual cash donation is going to be $14. The rest was equipment valued at $19,886. So thank you for the question.
Yeah, I thought it was a typo. And then, just curious. And I'm sure we've talked about it in the past, and I just can't recall. How do WEAF donations, grants kind of get allocated? Is it by request or do people put in, like how does it work? If you could just give us like the two kind of second.
Two second over two, yes, I can do it. Thank you for the question. So some grants are predetermined and have stipulations around them. For example, the Lockheed Martin grant is, it goes through WEAF, but Lockheed Martin has stipulations around how those funds can be used, and it's specifically intended to target science equipment at the high school level. And so that's one element, so there are some grants like that. Aside from that, there are grants that our schools, our teachers reach out to WEAF and they submit an application to request grant funding for new ideas that they want to explore, new approaches to things that are going to help them in the classroom. So, so yeah, the grants are out there and available. And we are making sure we're doing our best work to keep our building leaders informed so that they can be encouraging teachers to explore opportunities throughout the year. Thank you.
And, and sorry, one additional question. And any curriculum changes or updates, et cetera? Apart from these board meetings, are there other ways that we're publicizing that with families?
With regard to other pathways, so I'm thinking about our Board Curriculum and Technology Committee meetings that we have. We had some conversation about what that might look like next year and perhaps potentially increasing. We had just one this year because it was the bulk of the content was in the fall. And so that there wasn't a need for additional committee meetings this year, but there may be some next year. Aside from board committees and board meetings, we've been thinking about the math revisions, the curriculum revisions to the math program, and having some conversations around what that will look like to inform families about the curriculum changes. And really targeting helping parents and caregivers to know how to help their students with the new curriculum resources. And so that's something our Department of Teaching and Learning, we've been exploring and having conversations about, to see how to ensure at the school level, those experiences and opportunities exist. And so thinking specifically about implementation of new curriculum resources, that's what our intention and targeting efforts will be around. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dewan, I know we give parents the opportunity or anyone to come in and review any new material, but do we put out there like how you go about that process? Like do I just walk into this building and say, hey, I want to review the materials? Do I set up an appointment? Like how do parents know what to do?
When we put those items up for 30-day public review, we'll usually reference how to do it to reach out to the Department of Teaching and Learning, and I think I might have shared the phone number or an email address. At this point, the 30-day review period is over, but typically that's, and parents and caregivers will reach out to the Department of Teaching and Learning, they'll give a call over and set up time to come in to take a look at the materials. On the website, that information is available as well, so that links to the board meeting, the board agenda items also. But it's also on the Department of Teaching and Learning's website so that families know how to access and where to go if they do want to explore the resources closely.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to add to that, the Imagine Illustrated Math that we're using, it looks like K to 5 for next year, they have a pretty robust website in terms of like looking at the material, I found it really pretty helpful. So you can look online there and sort of see some stuff if you missed the review period. So that might be helpful.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Facilities and Transportation, Joe.
Thank you. We have seven action items for consideration this evening and vote for next week. I'm going to ask Tim if he could give us a quick run-through of each of them, please.
Sure. The first one is to obsolete items that are no longer useful here at Wissahickin. Next one we have is the approval of Bureau Veritas to complete a facilities condition report. This will be going through all the different buildings within Wissahickin, identifying all the machinery and equipment as well as tagging them. The next one we have is to approve CMG of Easton with the middle, middle school chiller wall construction. We also went out to bid for food service equipment, and we are recommending to approve Singer as the winner of that bid. We also have two playground improvements for inclusion, Shady Grove being one and Blue Bell being the other playground. And then finally, we have change order for the Blue Bell Expansion Project.
Thanks, Tim. I have some questions about 16.2, the feasibility study with Bureau Veritas. Can you explain to us how we selected that firm and guess what some of their qualifications are?
Sure, so Bureau Veritas is a company that, one of the different respondents that we got, they became one of our three finalists based on the presentation that they provided us. The presentation was reviewed by Mr. Russell and CHA also participated in that review. They then, these three finalists then were interviewed, we went through different interviews, asked questions, asking about their process. And really, they, and it stood out for Bureau Veritas and all this process was that this is their own function. They're not looking to try and get our engineering job, they're not looking to become our architect, they're not looking to become anything else. This is, only want to do the facilities condition assessment, and that's all we're really looking for them to do and support is what the rest of the stuff will be built out differently once we get that date. They did prove to be the best in the presentation as well as in the interview.
Okay, great. Tim, in addition to a facilities condition for each of our buildings, are they also going to be taking a look at building capacity and capacity utilization?
So they're not going to be dealing with building capacity or capacity utilization, that would be a different study for that. They're just strictly focused on the conditions of the buildings themselves. And this will be halls, sidewalks, everything, it's a really comprehensive. I've actually used them once before, and they did a really good job there with regards to gathering data.
And how do we expect to use the information that we get from this data?
So we're going to use the information, we're going to work with CHA, and we're going to use that to create a 10-year facilities project party list. Obviously, the board will be involved in trying to help us guide us through which projects they feel would be the priority. But this will help us identify which areas need stand out most. They're also going to be able to tag with scanning devices each of the equipments so that when maintenance is performed on them, we can scan that and update the maintenance. And the preventive maintenance system that they have also integrates on their system right into the one that we have now. And we can then create a preventive maintenance program with regards to work orders through facilities.
All right, thanks. Any other questions on 16.2?
Nothing, I do.
Yep, Zappy?
Thank you for that overview, and I think this is a very important project for us to be embarking on. I do also want to understand how this will dovetail with capacity because I do believe we may be, we may be having real capacity issues sooner than later. And I want to make sure that we're not doing this exercise in, in isolation, thank you, of capacity. Because I do feel like we need to be a little synergistic in how we're thinking through our capital projects. So I do also urge that we kind of think about doing that piece of this exercise before we embark on any real tenure planning, in my opinion. Thank you.
And Tim, my question was, how often do we have to have these kinds of surveys done?
They're good for five years, definitely. It really depends, if, if you're updating it as you go, it really is, what, and what you're doing will impact it. Let's say, are we going to just continue to do the maintenance? Well, you're probably going to have the masonry is going to eventually have to be looked at. So depending on how you're updating that in your plan, will really say how often you have to do it. Building in addition will change, changing out a lot of the equipment will change it. Putting a new roof moves that stuff out 20, 25 years. At a minimum, I would say we'd be good without any really need to go out again. At a minimum, I would say we'd be good without any really need to go out again.
And and Tim, if the contract talk or the proposal talks about uh report delivery in seventy days, so I'm assuming then in when we come back is when we get the readout from this. I'm sorry, can we, when we come back in the fall is when we get the readout from this if they're gonna provide the report in seventy days?
Yes, that's the timing of it. And so the report is also online. So it's, everything is maintained online. So you can start adjusting different values and updating all of that. Um, so that'll be available to start tenure plan. It's not gonna be the tenure plan in seventy days. It's gonna be used to start.
Thank you.
Um, thanks, Tim. Uh, moving on to sixteen point three, the dub, the middle school chiller sound control project. The the price tag is is uh, well, is much higher than at least I expected. Um, so I was, I'm curious, like, how much, how much of the high cost do you think is due to the current uncertainties of all the tariffs? Or is it this wall really just that expensive?
So there was an underground storage tank. It presents some problems that we have to, uh, we could not put a block wall up. We did explore potentially removing the underground storage tank, but that would create another issue given its proximity to the existing chiller. So we went with a different wall structure that met the sound. Even though that being said, price is much higher than we had expected even been thought of. We can't say specifically how much the high cost is due to the uncertainties and tariffs, but it's definitely impact. It definitely plays a big role in in what's coming.
Um, and sort of a follow up question. Are, and the whole saga with the with the sound and the and the chiller and the wall and all that is um, kind of confusing for me. So I guess, can you clarify? Are we currently in violation of any lower gwinnet sound ordinances because of the the chiller?
So the seven P M, the seven A M sound ordinance is where we are over on on that. Depending on which study ultimately, once it's put up and done, I decided to say where we stand with regards to that. But we are somewhere between one to four decibels above the sound ordinance, depending on the report and the timing. Originally, we were thought to be a little bit higher, but we confirmed with the ordinance with the township, we were bound to be about one to three.
Okay, so we're we're a little bit over the sound, uh, I guess, limit per lower gwinnet. Um, what's the, is the lower gwinnet's whatever? Uh, I don't know, regulations say what the remedy or penalties are for being over?
I do not know what they are. And I, and they have not given us any idea what it would be. They could fine us for being over the ordinance, but I have not.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, the the number is eye popping, so I just want to understand how obligated we are to.
It would be a daily fine and it would add up. Would be my expectation.
Alright. Um, other questions on the chiller?
Once this is done, that's gonna be in the.
That is exact, that's what the uh modeling by our acoustic experts showed. We would be under the ordinance.
Will we be under by a certain amount or expected amount? Or are we gonna be up against it just in case this issue comes up again?
So the material that they're putting on is supposed to lower it between five to ten decibels. So we would be below, so below. Um, so for one, we'd be four below, or three, we'd be two below minimum. Uh, we should be, we expect it to be a little bit further below. We're gonna expect closer to the ten based on the materials that we had approved. And we also have the option, if we want to, to put additional padding on the other walls to even dampen it further if necessary. They would not be nearly as expensive.
We had a few. The number is much higher than I expected, but looking at the other two bids, there seems much higher, like thirty to sixty thousand more, like in the line items. Could you tell like why they were more expensive than the one that came in the lowest?
Uh, it's gonna be where they're sourcing their materials from and their profit. That would be the only thing I can say because the amount of work is pretty much the same. They're gonna put the post in there, falls in. I'm assuming it's their profit margin and their cost of materials.
And alternate one, two, and three, what are these different alternate amounts?
So we were planning if we had to phase it in for different items, but we're not gonna do to take it. Just going with the base bit. Those were just options in case we.
And then where exactly is this wall going? What is it going to look like when it's up? Like, how tall is it?
The wall is fourteen feet high. It'll be about four to five feet. The chiller where it stands currently, there's currently a fence right there. So it'll be right about the same location.
And that's like fourteen feet high, that's gonna take care of the sound or a good portion of it?
That's what the expert said. I wish it was ten because it would have been cheaper, but we had to go to fourteen.
Thank you. Tim?
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. Um, uh, two questions. One, I'm assuming that the contractors have I'm assuming that the contractors have used this application in other projects before. Assuming that's the case, what is their confidence level that what they're expecting to achieve will actually be achieved? Given the price tag that we now have, because this is, this is.
It's a fair question. Um, so Harrison Acoustics is the one that's really coming up with the design and they're gonna be the ones responsible for ensuring to get to that level. Um, he feels extremely confident at the fourteen foot, that this will do it. It will push the sound up. So the sound's gonna go up more than come straight across. Some of it will bleed over, which is the sound that be the residual sound that comes over. Um, he thinks will be closer to the ten decibel, somewhere between the seven to ten decibels range.
Okay. Um, second question is, again, given the price tag, do we know what the useful life is um, left on the current system? Is this something that we won't have to revisit in another twenty or thirty years? Or is this something that will need to be replaced at some point in the relatively near future and that we need to reinvest what we're gonna spend this time?
Another good question. So as I understand it, it was put in seven years ago. From the explanation I was given, it's got about twenty-five years. We have about another eighteen years to go.
And then last question, I'm sorry, one more follow up then. Um, in terms of the other alternatives to potentially upgrade or replace the system, I know when we first started talking about this, it was a substantial difference. I don't remember what the numbers were, but given where we are now, is the difference between a replacement now versus what we'll be paying this time still, and given the useful life is in your calculation, I'm I don't wanna speak for you. Is it still a fair investment, given what we know now?
So, all things being equal, I would say yes, given the fact we have eighteen years with the existing H A C unit children. We would stick with that. We would probably get a price think you would look normally look for like about seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. Don't quote me on that. Just give me an average member. But again, that's before the tariffs. That's before we have to go find the parts. How do we have to wait for the parts to come in because there's supply chain issues that are gonna start coming. The tariffs don't change. Um, we'd also have to look at the location, the timing of when to board. I definitely think, as much as I hate to say this, believe me, I looked at every option under the sun to avoid this. From pulling the tank out to putting different type of fencing in, we had, we did a lot of other studies. This is the only one it's we feel it's gonna actually meet the needs and be least costly this year.
Thanks.
And Tim, you did say it's going to direct the sound up. I'm not a sound engineer, but it will just go up. It's not gonna bounce back towards school. That'd be disruptive to the students.
So I'm going off of Harrison Acoustics, the walls, the sound, so the the chiller's eight feet high. You're gonna be six feet over. So the sound's gonna come up and hit it and it's gonna be directed mainly. There will be sound that bleeds over. That's just the way sound works. Um, but the way that they're, the way the acoustic guy was explaining to us, the amount that bleeds over will be a lot less than what's just coming directly across right. We already put sound blankets on, just as a reminder to everyone on the system. So that's the sound blankets themselves. We're already provided a five to six decibel option, depending which one we look at.
Thank you.
Tim, one last question regarding the the chiller wall. If uh, after we spend three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to build the wall and it's all done and they do a sound check and we're still not below, um, who's liable for that, to remedy that? Do we have to pay more? Or is the, is Harrison Acoustics or the the construction firm liable to make it right?
I would have to defer to attorney if anyone in the construction, because of it being sound would have any, I'd have to look at the contracts with them to see if there was anything. Right now, I don't see, I wouldn't say anyone would be on the hook for the way the sound migrates. If it doesn't work, as long as it's built to the design specs.
If it, if it's built to design specs and it's still not um, below the lower gwinnet sound ordinance, if they're not on the hook for it, by default, that means we're on the hook for it. So then it means, I mean, we have to potentially pay more.
I would look probably to Harrison Acoustics insurance and see if there was something there. If there was anything in the contract. There are other things we can do, so. Cheaper than actually have to sue someone. Adding.
It is very unlikely that this will come with a guarantee, Joe.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Alright, but can we, oh, sorry, Dea.
My, Tim, as a taxpayer and a board member, I, it's hard to spend this kind of money and then just be one or two decibels below the ordinance. Because I think what we heard when the neighbors of Montgomery Avenue came in is that they would like to see the noise substantially reduced. And, you know, I don't know that that's possible, given what you're saying, but are we giving it to spend this kind of money? Because all I see is, I want this to go to education. Um, are we giving it our best shot to make that, those neighbors happy? That is the ultimate goal, I think. I I wanna make sure that they feel like we've done our part.
Okay, so first thing is the money's being spent out of capital, not general funds. So it can't be for educational purposes. It is me, it is there for construction and maintenance of the that money's a separate fund than what we put the other funds that are in a general fund to cover educational salaries. This has no budgetary impact other than the fact it's being spent out of the capital. So it would not be anything associated with this. Each year we transfer a portion over here for these types of situations that we can manage. Construction projects that needs the district is there. Uh, with regards to what the reduction is, the reduction, again, I have to go back to the expert says it will get us under the the ordinance. All I can, will it make everyone happy? It'll, it should get us under ordinance, but um, we've been told that no, unless we get it to zero, they won't be happy, which is not possible. That's that's not physically possible. Will we be under the ordinance by enough that that it would makes well sound? Yes. We've also done other things. So we've also changed the timers on when the chiller runs. We also set down the capacity levels to be lower. And remember, when you're testing this, you're running at a hundred percent capacity. So Mr. Russell has already changed some of the running functions of the chiller so that it is not running above at the, at the hundred percent capacity in the evening. Uh, we started it an hour later than we did previously. So I think we started six now versus five. And there's, we'll get this all out to the neighbors also and let them know this is group. And we get the timing of, I mean, the big thing to let her, before I let everyone out, I also need to get the timing is the one it's gonna be done. That's their main concern. Um, but we'll get that all out to them. But other than the fact that it's, should knock the sound down, whether they find that acceptable at their homes, I can't say.
Sorry, last one. Look this through us. And noted that this is coming out of capital, uh, our capital budget. But there's, you know, we have tons of capital projects that we need to think about. So is there any way we can put in our contract some shared risk language to ensure that we have a positive outcome in the close of this project? I don't like, I I get it. That's not something you can answer right now, but I've, I've done projects in other places, not in construction, where, you know, we put in a risk clause or some other type of clause where, you know, we don't meet certain requirements, then, you know, we have different financial arrangements. Can we think about uh, maybe looking at some creative ways to ensure that we have a successful project and we're, we're paying out this amount of money to like for a successful project? And then I have a question for sixteen point five.
Tim, can I just ask one question? Um, you said earlier that we are one to three decibels at a certain times.
Yes.
You said that the blankets reduced it by five decibels.
To that.
To that number. Is there a way to use that same technology to reduce it another four to five decibels?
No.
Whether it's thicker or different types of blankets, that would either save the cost or show. We already know that it's a success in using the blankets. If there's something additional that can be added to that to reduce it the rest of the way.
Now, we actually looked, looked at that. The blankets that are put on is actually a laser designed cover that goes over the chiller to reduce the cost. And it's measured and it's a specific uh material. There's a segment. We got the largest one you can buy. Try and dampen it down. And again, it's really the nighttime. So at nighttime, the ordinance drops five decibels. And we're only in this one sound.
So. Right, but that's what I, that's what I'm saying. To spend this kind of money on a wall as opposed to something we've already seen a positive result of. I, my question was, is there a way to use this technology to get the rest of the way there? And you're telling me that we've gotten the best of the best that you can use in that regard?
Yes, unfortunately, that is the best of the best that we can do. Uh, I believe we should definitely get below the well, more than one, two. I think we should be closer to five.
But there are two components. There's, are we within code? And are we appeasing the neighbors? The likelihood is we will be within code. The question then becomes, will they care? Because they, if it becau, i- if it's within code, but it still bothers them, they may come back to us and say, not good enough. And um, well, you know, the question is, if we're simply going by code, we're following the law. And if, and if we're simply going by that issue, then the concern of people who may not like it, but they also live in an area that people change the, you know, the way things, noises and different ordinances are different. And so, you know, I think we have to look at it from the perspective of, are we following the law? And if we are following the law, then I think that is what you have to determine what we do. And if this is the only way that we get to clients with the law, then that is what we should be doing. And if it's, well, it's still not appeasing us. Well, that, but that's, we can't do, you know, there are lots of people who don't like the look of things and this, you know, and sound and and you can't always get to what everybody wants, but you, that's why there are ordinances in place. So that there's a uniform code as to what is accepted. So as long as this does that, then I think, you know, you 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 wanna save price of any kind of litigation, legal costs or things like that. And and I think what we have to do is ensure that whatever we do uh, ensures that we are within the code by which we have.
So the sound blankets are the biggest that we can get. The goal is to get us below the ordinance. The other things that we've done to try and help sound to help with the neighbors with regards to is the timing when it goes, you know, and what capacities it runs at. So we've done a lot of different things there. I mean, if someone hears it and and it still bothers them to them, but we're below ordinance, there's really not much we can do with.
And so the numbers we're looking at, the goal by the company and what they're building. And so the numbers we're looking at, the goal by the company and what they're building, is to get it with it.
Okay, any, uh, any other final questions on the chiller wall? Questions on any of the other facilities?
Yeah.
One on sixteen point five. Oh, no, sixteen point four. For the food service equipment. Um, are we getting any extended warranties or anything along those lines for those equipment? Um, these are kind of very big pieces of equipment that I hope we don't need to replace very soon. So just curious about that.
So again, just before I get into, those funds are coming from the food service account. And are not coming from general fund, just so I know there's a lot of prices associated with that. These equip, these equipment pieces do come with warranties. Whether we've opted to get the extended warranty, I defer to our facilities and our people associated with that get an answer for you if they've chosen any extended warrants.
And I have a question also about that food service item. Um, so for the one at Stony Creek, Stony Creek's kitchen was just redone when we did the expansion. Is this something that's replacing an existing item there or is this something new? We need a new reaching freezer?
I will be honest, I have to get an answer for you on that because I did study for the middle school sound wall. They did not, they did not study for the food service equipment.
No worries, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious to see if something died, we had to replace it, didn't have like warranty anymore or what happened there?
I, I will look into.
And the other question I had is, you know, this comes up every time we're doing these um getting rid of obsolete equipment. How do we still have VHS, DVD, CD players? Like, how do these things, every time we get rid of them every single time and we keep finding more? Is that what happens?
They must be going to my house because I got tons of. I got a lot of VHS at my house, I don't know.
Yeah, it's just cute, it's just strange, it comes up every single time, like, wow, how do we keep finding this stuff? Um, and then stadium turf. Like, are we getting rid of that or can somebody actually repurpose that?
I'll have to get an answer whether they can repurpose that, I have no idea.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but when I saw it, I was like, oh, wow, that'd be great if we could be repurposed. Alright, that was all the questions I had.
Great, we get some.
All right, um, any questions in any other facilities items?
The facilities condition? They should all be in before that is done. If not, they will be provided this list so they do know. So they'll be coordinating with Mr. Russell and the supervisors at each of the buildings to go through the buildings, so this information will be available.
Good question. Tim, just one more follow up on the chiller. Would you be able to send to the board the latest estimate on replacement for the chillers? Whenever the, whatever last estimate we might receive.
An estimate for the replacement of the chiller?
Yeah, whatever, I know that was investigated before. If you could just share that with the board, maybe via email.
Sure.
Thank you.
Was that that the new chillers would be, new chillers would be less loud? Was that the thought that you had?
Yes.
Is that, is that accurate? Like now newer chillers are produced less noise? You don't have.
I'm not a DHC expert.
We just put one in a blue belt, right?
We're not having this problem with any other.
That's not running yet.
It's not running yet, you said, I'm sorry.
No, that is not up and running, that'll be up and running on the first.
Okay, so after the first, we'll have a sense of whether or not the new one is quiet.
And there's, well, there's also different ordinances to the sound ordinances over at Whip Paint are different than the ones over here, so that so the numbers are actually higher over Whip Paint, so we could run a louder one even though that one's quiet. So, and it's newer, so yes, the thought process, you know, without knowing the size and capacity, obviously, blue belts no addition's not the same size as the middles. So I, I wouldn't say that just because one's quieter, the other one's quieter. You would think just intrinsically, just the fact that you have a new chiller, it's eight years newer, seven years newer, it would be quieter. But I can't say that without checking with people that know what they're doing.
The, the contract, they should be rated for sound when they, from the manufacturers. So whoever the contractor is should be able to tell us what the expected noise level will be based on the manufacturer specs. So we can look at that, and I don't know if there's, I don't know if we look at the other systems ne- necessarily direct replacement for exactly what we have, there might be newer updated systems. I'm not asking you to reinvent the wheel, I know you've done a lot of work for this. So I'm just asking what you've looked at and what's been considered, I know Wade was working on this too. Um, I just don't have it readily available, so if you, if you could forward what you have, at least we'd have something.
Yeah, I'll get some information on it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Joe.
Yeah.
Can I share one final thought on this?
Sure.
Less of, less of a question, more of a comment. And I think I said something to this effect during one of the finance committee meetings. It's like, I understand that there are different funds. I understand that there's a capital reserve fund, I understand that that money's coming from food services, et cetera. But as a taxpayer, I'm paying money. And, you know, we all decide where that money goes. And so technically, yes, I know this money is allocated here and not there, but the money is still all affecting what we're able to put in the education fund. From, from a taxpayer perspective, that is how I feel. I know that that is, um, that it's very like rigid in, in some thinking and that's fine, but like, I think, and I think someone sitting on the other side of the table would would just say that, and I just want to recognize. Thank you.
And Joe, I have a comment not related to the chiller.
Okay.
I just wanted, related to seventeen point ten, I just wanted to thank the Odell family, that's quite a generous contribution to give um that amount towards new uh uniforms for our girls across teams. So I did want to just publicly say thank you to that family. Oh, that's finance, oh my goodness. All right, well, never mind, I'll.
All right, so that's a good segue to move into finance, I think.
Because I scrolled too fast, okay.
Okay, and hopefully the chiller issues will be resolved when we meet a year from now. Okay, for the finance committee, we have ten items. Uh, nine of those are for review and discussion and vote next week. One of those is for a vote tonight. Um, the first two are, are regular financial reports and list of payments. Um, seventeen point four uh through seventeen point eight are all um orders of settlement against uh revised assessments of property taxes. Uh, seventeen point nine is acceptance of a contract amendment for the nutrition group for our food service. Uh, seventeen ten. Amy is the very generous donation from the Odell family for our girls across jerseys. Um, and I'm going to stop there before we go to seventeen point three where we do need to take a vote. Are there any questions on seventeen one, two, and then four through ten?
Me.
Yes.
So thank you for that overview. I, um, this question, Jim, is just for long term planning and thinking. I see five assessment appeals. One has no budget impact, but one of them has a hundred and ninety K plus of an, of a, of a a deduction. So I'm curious to see if we're keeping tabs of all of these kind of appeals and how that is impacting our overall budget for next year, like just moving forward. Like, how much is this going to reduce our revenue moving forward? Not for today, just something we should just keep like a really laser focused, keep tabs on it. I don't know if we need to like look at it quarterly or something, but it does make me uncomfortable when I see these large numbers, like, okay, two thousand here and there, five, but one's one ninety, the other one's fifty, the other one's almost fifty, like, these are large amounts, so. I just want us to keep a very strong kind of uh look at this. Thank you.
And Jim, looking at those, it looks like they're both.
No, it's, it's more.
Is that just from like the client trends? Do we have any idea?
So there are ones that were actually experiencing the lower typically the commercial. And then there's some higher end properties that have had some due to the increase in ratio, which basically you take that rate times assessed by that issue, which probably values are applied. So that, that's really is, there's some that for tax. We've negotiated, we've gotten appraisals, we've done our diligence. It's not that we just settled just on conversation, we actually do a lot of research. I have a good background in this, so I do know where they end up. Done with it. And we also have the right to do the reverse appeals when they come into place. We'll look at those on, so we have some of people so applying for higher ones based on the information that we had in our fingertips.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, so seventeen point three. Uh, we've had many discussions in the finance committee around the budget for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Um, thank you to the administration for getting information on that budget out to the community uh and with second families, really appreciate that. So what we need to do tonight is uh actually vote on the draft of that budget to be able to send to state and make available for. Um, so I'm asking for a motion to go ahead and approve.
Is that moved?
Motion's been made and seconded, other comments or questions? I know, I'll stop with questions, I've seen floating around out there, hearing from people about the fact that we're seeing um some issues with our budget this year, that we've had to go to the max number because of um our decision not to follow President's order in terms of uh the mandate regarding CBI. Can you explain what's happening in Pennsylvania right now and how that has impacted our budget at this point?
So there, yes, I, I am aware of that rumor and I can unequivocally say it's completely false. Uh, our funding issues, uh, challenges have nothing to do with any programs we may or may not have in place uh in the, in the schools. It has to do with inflationary pressures, especially in transportation and healthcare. It has to do with meeting the needs of students with special needs that are more than normal year. And uh and, and inflation in general, salaries, health benefits go up. Inflation, it goes up, the cost of things go up. The Act One index is set exactly at four point zero percent. So we have things, major cost elements in the budget going up to four. So it has nothing to do.
And I've also heard, um, you know, and not heard, I know that we're removing the TOSA position um with temporary positions to begin with. Um, but no one in this, none of our teachers or staff are losing their jobs in some districts. We're going to be seeing those individuals in other positions, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We were able to craft a, a plan where no existing employee loses the job, which is actually a fun accomplishment in this day and age where other districts nearby in Montgomery County multimillion dollar challenges still, they are not announced yet. And so they won't, at the end of their day, be able to say that no one, no employees lose.
And something else I'd heard about was the cuts in the K through five P's classroom. It looks like we are keeping on board the twelve P's that we currently have. And actually looking at the top, we're adding additional staffing to the program, correct? So we're not losing really anybody in that area, we're gaining.
We're certainly hiring more staff to, to meet the needs of the PACE program. The, the way that those classmates will look next year will be slightly different in that there won't be an automatic two classroom aides in every classroom. There will be an automatic one plus an automatic floater in each building. So it would be one and a fraction, depending on where the floater is at any given point in time. As compared to the now current, which there is one teacher, two aides, and however many one on one positions needed. So the model is changing slightly, which is why we're able to keep the cost down slightly. Because it's going to be now one aide in every classroom plus the floater, instead of an automatic two in every classroom.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any other questions or comments?
I have, I just have a good comment. I think as, you know, as a taxpayer, it's hard to see a tax rate increase of four percent and then know to that what I'll call, um, lovingly call, I have a couple of these, general education students or non-special education students. It feels, it feels as though maybe they're losing something in a way, like maybe they don't have the TOSA or whatever. And I, I it's hard to process because I also feel a little bit sad about the kind of, the, the cuts we had to make. Um, there are, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit later in the PSB report, but there are a lot of unfunded mandates and we have to meet those, those mandates with education dollars from the local taxpayer, called eighty percent on the local taxpayer. And so when we have to do that, something else has to give. And so I feel like it's not a fair model. Um, so it's just, it is hard and I, I feel, I feel that way as a taxpayer and a parent. Um. So I just think it's important that people have an understanding of, you know, kind of that the model is flawed versus, you know, maybe the first thing I would think is other school boards being uh you know, not responsible with my tax dollars. And, and that's, that's not at all the case. In fact, I feel like we're, we've crafted, and the administration has crafted, a very responsible budget. Um, it's just when costs are skyrocketing and you only have, and you have to, that has to fall eighty percent on the local taxpayer, you're going to see your taxes increasing. So it's just, it's a very hard funding system that we're dealing with and that, that to me is the real issue, so I just wanted to point it out.
And Jim, um, can you just explain also, um, because not everybody got to come to our, a great finance budget workshop meetings? Um, the new supervisor of special education and the new student service clerk, those roles and how they're going to help that department?
Yeah, so one of the things that, that of course comes along with an expansion of any program, in this case, the PACE program, is the need to uh make sure it's functioning properly, make sure it's properly supervised, and also make sure that the, all these new employees are led in a way that makes them optimize this experience in that classroom for the children. That can't be done as you add more programs and keep leaders, leadership levels constant. So the additional supervisor is needed for leading uh programs and ensuring quality, while the clerk is needed for all the paperwork that is associated with the.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, so that was finance committee, so we'll now move on, nothing else, right, Steve, that was all your report? Good, okay, thank you. Um, policy committee report, Marshall.
Okay, there are no informational items, action items, we'll be looking for approval of eighteen point one through eighteen point ten, uh which will be the second reading.
Thank you, Mark, any comments or questions?
Just one comment, um, and maybe this is something I could bring back um to Kristen and like for communications. It just occurred to me, like, we, Marshall and the team goes through this very rigorous process of updating our policies. But if people are not um aware that this is happening, it might uh be missed. So perhaps maybe uh an idea I had was we kind of have communications kind of push out about these updates to ensure students, families, teachers, everybody's fully up to speed of, of all these updates. And not to like reiterate or kind of like put every detail in there, but to at least bring light that there's been some updates and for, you know, for people to know where to go find them. Um, it is just a thought. Um, and i- if there's appetite, I could definitely bring that back to the communications committee to figure out what's like a, an, an appropriate way to kind of share this out, uh, like just more broadly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's any issue with making sure that. Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any issue with making sure that many people probably see it. These meetings are always public, they're advertised, all the policies, changes, these are. Also presented, anybody, so I agree, let's make sure that as many people see them as possible, but like every other. Change we make to anything else that's presented, nothing is done or kept without. From anybody who. That, that is also not, we made it, well, there is one, I don't believe we have.
So. Personally, I would like to retain the language in policy nine oh three on the public commentary, allowing representatives from groups.
What do you mean you want to, it's in, it's in there? What do you want to, what do you?
So the, the language is currently being recommended to strike, the only one representing a group in the community, I'm sorry.
I think we're, we're losing, so the policy changes, anything that's being considered is attached to.
Yes, correct, I, I'm, I'm talking.
Then I'm not understanding, i- if, if the policy language that's being proposed, we've already looked at twice publicly in meetings as well as. Policy committee meetings, what are you missing?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not missing anything. I'm, I'm not missing, you, I think, I think your public spray out policy is. I'm not making any.
Oh, I thought you said, where's the language?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said, you didn't have it.
No, 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 that was my intent, I'm, 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 be here, comment on specific policy, nine oh three, the public. Commentary during board meetings policy.
Right.
And, and I would prefer to retain the language that's currently strict and it says, anyone representing. The school district, that, that's my.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you for your report, Marshall. We'll move on now to racial equity oversight.
Thank you, Amy, on April twenty first, we had a. Virtual RIOT committee meeting, and in that meeting, we had a presentation from the administration on belongingness. Dr. Dwan, do you mind giving a brief update on the progress that we've made as a district?
Sure, I don't have the specific details in front of me for tonight's overview, but there was rich discussion around looking at the, the data for student. The student survey data as well as the staff survey data. Ms. Latour did a wonderful job providing updates on this year's outcome and comparing that to prior years. All of that information is readily accessible on our website, on our equity dashboard, if anyone is interested in taking a look at the specific outcomes. And of course, the evening also included opportunities for the committee to ask questions and you did, very rich questions, good questions. But you also provided rich insight and ideas and suggestions for administration to consider as we move forward. Ms. Latour also reviewed the dates presented as proposed dates for next year's sequence of meetings with the Racial Equity Oversight Committee. And yeah, it was a good night as always and great opportunity for rich conversation and good insights from the committee, thank you.
Great, thank you, that's all we have for tonight.
Great, thank you, Paul, any comments or questions? Thank you again, health, wellness and safety, Jean?
Yes, we held a meeting on April twenty first, there are several agenda items discussed, and we are currently preparing the minutes and supporting materials to present the next.
Thank you, Jean. All right, and reported board represent, oh, actually, sorry, any comments or questions? Thank you, reported board representatives, extracurricular, Marshall.
Uh, there's nothing new to report this evening.
Thank you, for MCIU, I did want to share. There was a Worcester Hickens student that recently competed in a national competition through the MCIU and got second place. Let me scroll down to the information about it, so the competition was NTID, I'm not sure what that acronym is. Seen all these acronyms, um, play was a national math competition open to middle school students that are deaf or hard of hearing and enjoy mathematics. And each year, the event begins with four regional competitions and then leading to the national one. And up to twenty five teams per region gather and face off in fast paced competition and answer a variety of challenging math questions. And all of the students are deaf or hard of hearing and fifteen years or younger. And, yeah, so there were three students from the MCIU that got second place and one of them was Tyler Schaefer, he's a sixth grader here at Worcester Hickens. So I just wanted to congratulate Tyler and I'll share out with the board, I have a picture of the team that went out for the competition, but that was just really exciting news to hear that. He got second place.
And that, did you say NTID?
Yeah.
National Technical Institute for the Deaf? It counts.
Um, all right, and that's all I have for my report this evening. Um, let's see, North Monco.
Hi, we had a meeting April twenty first, prior to the meeting, we are, there's an ad hoc committee. For our capacity issue at North Monco and I sit on that ad hoc committee and that was our third of our fifth meeting. So we did look at a lot of numbers and information, one, something that I was really proud of. For the school year twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, we have sixty Worcester Hickens students who applied. And forty three who got placed. For reference, last, this year, it was forty three applied, twenty eight got placed. Previous to that was forty and twenty two, so if folks don't remember, this is twenty five, twenty six will be our first year. With ninth grader, starting at the technical career center, which is a really big deal. And I think that has helped kind of like bump up our numbers. So with this capacity issue, it, it's just, we have a large waitlist. At North Monco, when we're, we've been looking at alternative options. The biggest problem is North Penn, quite frankly. They just have way, way, way too many students interested in the program. We were looking at a Twilight program, it doesn't look like that's going to be feasible and there's not enough interest at this time. We are looking at some offside programming options and looking at some partners, so this is probably more of a twenty six, twenty seven. Kind of a much longer term, and then next month, we are having. Site logic IQ and J K O architects, along with Monco Planning Commission. Coming in to tell, give us a capacity overview, which by the way, I think we need to do here at Worcester Hickens. Where they will examine the entire, the entire ability to ensure that we've maximized the space for the programs that were. That they, they offer there, so all good information there. And then our regular meeting was just regular agenda items like budget and planning things, but we did have a presentation from. Two or three, two electrical students and it, I thought it was just a phenomenal presentation. They're both doing, I call it a co-op, but there, there's some other name that's used at North Monco where they spend part of their day working in their, in their trade. And the one young lady was so impressive, she's done all this very extensive electrical work across the state. Like she goes to all these different places for all these different projects and she's a, a senior. I think Sutterton, I think she was Sutterton student and one of only female in the program. So it was, it was a good meeting and nothing else to report unless other folks have questions.
Thank you so much, uh, Diane, PSBI?
Yeah, I did, I did want to provide some information that I think is really timely, I, I got the, there's a, the PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Board Association puts out, put out the twenty twenty five. School District Mandate Report, this was an eighty page report, so I'm just going to give you a very brief summary, I could send it to you all as well. But the report highlight, highlights how federal, or sorry, how hundreds of federal and especially state mandates were often rooted in positive intentions like improving quality of education, health, safety, transparency. Collectively impose significant burdens on our public schools. These mandates dictate not just what schools must do, but also how they must do it and crucially, how much it costs. A major concern is that most mandates are either unfunded or underfunded. For example, special education expenses have soared by eighty six percent since two thousand and ten, while state and federal funding has only risen by ten percent. I want to just say that again, special education expenses soared by eighty six percent, the funding only by ten percent. Forcing districts to either raise property taxes, cut programs, or dip into reserves. The report categorizes mandates into two types, cost drivers such as employee benefits, special education, charter school payments that strain district budgets. And prescriptive mandates when, which micromanage aberrations, instruction staffing, reporting, governance. Ultimately, the cumulative effect of these mandates drains resources away from the classroom, limits local decision making and pressures districts to make tough financial choices. That can negatively affect students, the PSBA calls for policymakers to be more diligent in evaluating mandates. And to avoid further unfunded burdens and to work toward real mandate relief so that schools can focus on more, fully on educating students and not just complying with paperwork. That's all for now.
Thank you, Diane, if you could share that out, that would be very interesting to read, thank you.
All eighty pages of it coming your way.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding that? All right, and do you have anything for your, Steve?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we're at our second public comment period, the board appreciates hearing from the community, a maximum of five speakers will be heard on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes, in the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally. If the board's anxious not to engage in dialogue with speakers, when appropriate, we will follow up with responses on board docs. When approaching the podium, please state your name, municipality of residence, excuse me, and the topic on which you're speaking. And we'll start with in person, and we have Carmena Taylor.
Good evening, I just want to point out something about policy nine oh three, Marshall, I'm speaking specifically to you because you're the chairman of the committee. This policy was adopted August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, it was last revised on May first, two thousand and twenty three, I was here. I asked, I sent a question to the board and I said, why did you keep the sentence that's being striked out now? Your answer, and I will find the response, was because you wanted the community to be involved. And at the time, I was very happy that you as a board made a decision to keep that sentence in policy nine oh three. Because it encourages non-traditional groups that advocate for families to participate. I must have missed between the first and second reading when you first asked, why were these changes coming up? The, the PSBA made recommendations, have you told the community why these recommendations are coming from NSBA? Have you told them it's a closed group, it's a membership organization? So why does this group get to influence how this school board changes its language? So getting back to Steve's point, my point from the very beginning. When you strike, strike out that language that you limit community groups, you're essentially talking about an NAACP not being able to come here in goodwill. On behalf of people that feel like either their civil rights are being violated, racial justice rights are being violated. There's talk amongst everyone that are public education advocates, if the federal government has eliminated the Civil Rights Department of the Department of Education. Where do families go? So at the county commissioners, the Montgomery County Commissioners meeting, they kind of highlighted all the NAACP chapters in February for Black History Month. And we said, I said, that at this time, at this moment, under the Trump administration, there is no local support. For people that feel that their civil rights are violated. So if you take that language out of this policy, you're eliminating groups that can help your families that aren't taxpayers. That aren't alumni, that aren't advocates. I mean, advocate, alumni, so I want you guys to discuss it, share with the public, why would you take that language out of this policy? It makes no sense, you have to be relevant for this time. So the question is, what happened between May first, twenty twenty three to next week, right? It's going to be May fifth, twenty twenty five, will it still be a second reading or will it be a third reading at that time? You're eliminating inclusion, you're eliminating advocacy and advocacy looks very different. I'm not going to be here all the time, they need help and I think this is short sighted to get rid of this failure again. Two years after it was last revised.
Thank you, Carmena, is there anybody online?
There are no hands raised online.
All right, then we'll close the second comment period and we'll move on to board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any comments?
I have a couple of comments. Uh, the girls lacrosse team won. I do want to make it, I do want us to look into a capacity study, like I really do think that is something we need to put on the agenda sooner than later. I think, I think it's, it's time. And then I do, this is just personally as a mom, like I'm, I am really still struggling with the amount of work our high school kids get. My kids are doing mock APs after school. And there, there's multiple days that they're doing this. Last Thursday, my son had five tests in one day and then an AP mock at the end of the day. Like, we are overloading these kids and I know, we, like, it, it's, it's hard, right? Because we want them to excel, we want them to do things, but there has to be a better way to like schedule these things. I, I just, I just feel like, you know, if they're in college, yes, they might have exams all in one day, but they're probably only going to have four classes, right? Like they're not doing this kind of extensive curriculum and program. I, I, I'm really, I think it's time we kind of like took a step back and really looked at, you know, how we're structuring things. It, it's a lot of stress, it, it's a lot of pressure, so I'm going to get off my sofa, so. That's it, the bounce.
Thank you, Zappy, any other, any other comments, Stephanie? I just had two, one was related to communication, so recently I've been hearing, you know, that maybe our board meetings, our committee meetings may not. The word may not be getting out there that people don't know when they are, even if you announce them and they're on board docs. So I did tend the one with meeting, we did, we are going to send that information now out to the HSA's so they can hopefully send their weekly newsletters. To the extent that they have a newsletter at whatever level it is. And then also, we talked about doing text on the first of the month, sharing out a link to the meetings for that month. And Kristen and I talked about including more information in the WIS watch. But I ended up, there were other things, except maybe in communications that we could explore, like, I don't know, I get my news from Facebook regarding like certain things within the district, like that's what I follow. I don't know what other people follow.
So it, it, one of the comments at Dr. Dwan's community meeting last week was, I'm not sure all parents are aware of the app. And if there's a way to really promote the app, because the app pretty much has all that information on it.
Yeah, that's true, not many people know about that app. So I'm just thinking if we could explore like, to figure out like how people get their information, like I know different generations get from different places, I'm still in the Facebook era. But some people are in other, you know, social media networks, so I'm not sure if we can explore that a little bit, everybody can talk.
Yeah, no, I think there's, you know, we can always do more, we can always do better. I know Kristen put out an announcement lap for this meeting, so. I, I think we need to maybe be more consistent. I, I think we need to maybe be more consistent. But maybe like doing an outreach and see how people want to get that information, might be warranted. So a valid, a valid question, especially if you're new to the area, you may not know even where to like start looking, so. And our, our website is, is great, but it's very dense too, so it's sometimes a little hard to navigate through that. So I'll take that back to Kristin and we can certainly bring that up. I, I meet with her monthly, so we could definitely pick through that. Thanks for, for that.
Yeah, thank you. And I think what you suggested, like doing some sort of like maybe survey heading into next year, just finding out how people want to be communicated with. Like, some people also comment to me, they're, you know, inundated with emails, they're getting emails, it's the best thing. So how do people want us to communicate with them and share that information? I think that survey would be a great idea.
Thank you. And then my other question, Tim. The sound system at the high school, have we looked into what happened like with the musical and why we couldn't hear some people during the musical and what, if it just needs a repair or if we need to replace the sound system? Has anything been looked into before?
I have not been associated with it, but I have someone checking in.
Yeah, if we could, it was.
They already be.
Yeah, I just want to see where we were with that, because I felt it was really disappointing, all the preparation our students put into putting on that performance and then to not be able to hear some of them. Just if we could look into that to make sure going forward, that doesn't happen for our students.
Any auditorium?
Auditorium. Yeah, thank you. And that's all I got. So no one else? All right, then a message to adjourns?